Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting of Monday, June 27. I am Jeannie Jenkins, and I have the pleasure of chairing this board. I'm going to ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Gary Corey.
Hi, Tom Haley.
Jim Carroll.
Jean Conner.
Sarah Perrin.
Good evening, Bruce Lee Clark.
Lovely. And also with us tonight, we have Stu Hurd, our town manager. We have Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes always. And we have Jim Vires on the camera for Cat TV, which we so appreciate. Thank you very, very much. All right, so first up tonight is, as always, the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim, would you lead us in that?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And now, Jean, would you please read the vision statement that guides all our work?
I will. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. All right, so first up is the consent agenda. For the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you.
I have a correction for...
Can we have a second?
Second.
All right. All right, and now, discussion.
Correction for minutes of June 13th on line 218. Okay, you do. So Ms. Perrin was disappointed an individual with decades of federal law enforcement experience wasn't appointed C-PART Board as she felt that would have brought balance of experiences and backgrounds to the Board and what was in place. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat or not?
No, I don't know what I'm saying.
Please don't say names.
No names.
I didn't name a... No names.
Oh.
Okay.
Yes.
And I can send that as well.
All right, any other...
But that was the gist.
Thank you, thank you, Sarah. Any other points of discussion on either the minutes or the warrants? All right, if not, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? All right, super. All right, next up is public comment. And first up is the Bennington Free Library. Lynda Donegan, are you... You are the speaker, yes?
I am.
Okay, lovely.
I am. My name is Lynda Donegan. I'm the Youth Services Librarian at Bennington Free Library. I am a resident of Powell. I gave each of you some of our Oceans of Possibilities summer program because that's what I would like to talk about today. Oceans of Possibilities is the summer reading program theme this year, which we kicked off in early June. I want to focus on the ways that Bennington Free Library makes things possible for children, for families, and for the community because we believe in possibilities. And as a librarian, we're always looking at numbers, so I'm going to give you possibilities by the numbers. 2,000. Summer reading information was distributed to 2,000 students in 12 public and private schools, ranging from kindergarten to middle school. 250. An additional 250 packets of information were distributed to families in early childhood programs through our Book Express program, our monthly outreach, book delivery to childcare centers. 25. We have 25 programs planned for in-person possibilities, ranging from babies to adults. Tuesdays with toddlers and twos to make her space Mondays with school-age kids to wet and wild Wednesday story hours to special pop-up programs for teens and tweens to summer challenges for adults. We have six possibilities for families to have free, fun, and interesting ways to be together, ranging from movies to live animal presentation to a fairy house workshop to our Cliff Summer Readers Event, which happens to be tomorrow. And of course, you're all invited to boogie down at the BFL in August for a street dance in the library's courtyard and street. We offer six different and always-changing discovery centers in the children's room for families to share time together. Anytime the library is open, hands-on STEM, art, puppetry, dramatic play, puzzles and games, the possibilities are endless when families come together in their own time, in their own space, and learn. We are fully open to the public six days a week and offer access to our online services 24/7, and most importantly, access to the BFL lasts a lifetime of possibilities. The pandemic has been particularly challenging for children and families and has required us to keep growing and changing in response. We have figured out the possibilities at each stage of the pandemic and planned accordingly. Takeout, virtual, online, expanded databases, make and take, gradually included, a fully open library, and in-person programming. The public library is committed to supporting growth and change, and that's a key to possibilities in our great community. 16,000. We have 16,000 books and materials available in the children's room. In addition, Catamount Consortium allows our patrons to borrow books and materials from 20-plus library through a courier system that delivers twice a week to our library. We're committed to offering a diverse collection of books to better represent our community and our culture. Possibilities for all patrons must be equitable and inclusive. What were the possibilities serving our new Afghan neighbors? Stories across the border was the answer. We expanded our collection to include bilingual books in Dari and English and created bags of picture books for families, teachers, and volunteer tutors that I had translated into Dari. Recently, our new titles were purchased to support our ever-growing Spanish-speaking neighbors as well. Possibilities multiply when institutions, organizations, and businesses come together to support our greater community. The BFL collaborated with over 22 other entities so far just this year with joint programs through outreach, library-sponsored programs, and community events. For example, Full Steam Ahead Science and Art Kits for kids through the hospital and AmeriCorps Vista. Vermont Humanities, Stories Across Borders, Vermont Reads, We Contain Multitudes, Juneteenth Collaboration with the SVSU, Bennington Museum, Museum ABCs, Read Around the Block, Sunrise Direct Services, Community Grants, Children's Literacy Foundation, Summer Readers Grants, Queer Connect, The Pride Parade, Mayfest, the BFL Book Sale, and Healthy Kids Day at the Y. Let me conclude by inviting you and everyone in our community to explore Oceans of Possibilities at the BFL. I want to thank the Select Board for this opportunity and to acknowledge the importance of their own vision statement, and I'm so glad that you read that before we started. It is beautiful. And the BFL is proud to be part of this community and the possibilities that we can offer together.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Lynda before she steps on? If people want more information, is the best way to go on your website? Is it to...
There are multiple ways.
Okay, good.
You know, in this social media.
Modern age.
We got with it. Facebook, the website, if you want to be put on the children's program email list. We also will have our new newsletter. We send out MailChimp once a month with our Month in a Minute, so you can sign up for that. The newspaper, we love the banner.
You use Front Porch Forum?
And Front Porch, oh, yes, every week. It's like my Sunday homework. Yes.
Okay, so there are lots of ways to find you.
Lots of ways.
Thank you.
And you can call us.
That was really informative.
You can call us, or you can come in.
I'll circulate this out, let people pass this around.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, let's see. Oh, we're doing this. Next up, Skate Park, Nancy White.
I'm here... Oh, sorry. Nancy White, Bennington. I'm here because at the last meeting, Jeannie decided to violate the open meeting rules of the state of Vermont. I support a skate park. It was on the agenda at the last meeting. I had a couple of questions I wanted to ask, but Jeannie, you decided you didn't want the public to ask questions. After the Select Board voted, I asked from the audience when the citizens were going to have a chance to speak. Jeannie, your reply was, you had voted and the Board was moving on. One of you should have spoken up and reminded Jeannie that under state law, citizens can participate in discussions on an agenda as long as there is order in the room. There was no problem at the meeting. When you're to the point that you feel you're so entitled, you can violate the open meeting law and do it on TV, I think you should resign from the Select Board. You can't talk about being inclusive and rights and voices when you know the law and you went out of your way to stop people from speaking.
All right, so Nancy, do you have anything else you want to say?
Well, I want to hear your response, Jeannie.
I am planning to respond, but I'm going to ask you to sit down because unless someone else from the Board has a question for Nancy before she sits down. All right, so please go back. You're finished speaking, and I will respond to you. One, I said two things. One, I said, we just voted, so there was not time for discussion then. You said, when will there be time? And I said, this is certainly not the last time we will be discussing this issue. If there were particular questions, you are very welcome to ask them now. I did not see you. The problem when people sit in the very back and there are people in front of them is that it is not always easy to see them. And you're right, I did forget, as I said, to ask if anyone in the audience had a question. But that, we're beginning the conversation on the skate park, certainly not ending it. But if there are specific questions that you have, please state them now. Otherwise, I think, you know, I'm sorry that I missed you. It was not intentional, and as I said, the discussion is not over.
You asked her to sit down.
But I did ask you to sit down. So I am going to ask you, unless you have a specific question...
Jeannie, citizens in the audience...
Nancy, unless you have a specific question about the skate park, I think we're done with that.
Jeannie, this is important. This is about the rights and the open meeting laws.
And it's not in violation of the open meeting law.
Oh, it isn't?
No, it is not.
Well, I spoke to Jim last night when I saw him on the street. Jim admitted that you had made a mistake.
Nancy, I'm going to ask you right now to please sit down. Unless you have a question about the skate park.
And I'm going to continue to ask that you resign. You cannot make up the rules as you go along.
I think we need to take a moment. Let's take a moment, okay? Thank you, Nancy. Let's see. So to continue with public comment, our next person up is Jenny Doerr.
Yeah, thank you so much. Before I start with what I want to say, I just want to remind you of a few upcoming events. We have Thursday Night Live this week is the convergence trio with Wanda Houston. It's going to be amazing. Please come. They're coming from the Berkshires and Brattleboro, so it's, they're amazing. I've seen her many times. Midnight Madness has changed from the 14th of July to the 21st of July, so please, everybody, put that in the calendars. Midnight Madness from 7 till 12, July 21st. The Townwide Tag Sale in partnership with both libraries is July 24th for the downtown part, July 23rd and 24th for any of the home sales. The applications are on our website, BetterBennington.com, if you would like to sign up for it. $10 for a home sale, $20 to be in one of the collaborative sales. Now I would like to talk about Bill Clark. Bill Clark works at the Better Bennington Corporation, and he, more importantly, works for the town of Bennington as a whole, not as an entity. But I don't know, he's so behind the scenes that I don't think that he gets the recognition he deserves for everything he does for all of us. Just a few examples of what he does. His title is Streetscape and Maintenance. He takes care of the kiosk posters, the cleaning, the repairs as needed. He does the sidewalk cleaning two times a week. He does daily litter removal from the downtown of Bennington. He removes graffiti as needed if it happens. Holiday decoration prep and collaborative installation with buildings and grounds. Bench and planter installation with buildings and grounds. Maintenance of the fountain and park in Fountain Memorial Park and in the Pocket Park. He assists the town with upkeep of public spaces, the River Walk, all the parks, et cetera. He helps with every event. He sets up all the events for BBC. Now it's a weekly thing on Thursdays. I could not do it without him. He oversees work crews such as UCS, CIR, probation and parole, and college students who all volunteer with him. He paints all the barrels and the benches and the signposts that you all enjoy during the summer. He does the tree bed maintenance. He assists the town with park mulching, trimming, weeding, snow removal at crosswalks, proper maintenance of vacant storefronts since there are no tenants to do that cleanup for those buildings. Pole maintenance, sticker removals, parking lot cleaning. He takes down streetscape and he decorates, oh, and he decorates the fountain park for Christmas. He is a gem. We are so lucky to have him at BBC. We are so lucky to have him at the town of Bennington. And with that, I would like to introduce you to the president of our Board, Susan Pleisance.
So I don't know about you, but I'm tired listening to all that Bill does. And that's not even the half of it, I think. I think there's way more, and you can probably speak to the chamber about their events. Bill's there, ready, willing, and able all the time. And I didn't know, I don't feel you all read the banner story about Bill, and from what I understand, now, that was the second story. I hadn't heard either one of them until that day that the story came out about Bill. And I have to tell you, I've never met anybody kinder, and he didn't have to be. He is the nicest, most hard-working, honorable man I have ever met. And with that, Bill, can you come on up for a minute? I just, it's small, it's so small, but I've taken the story that Mike wrote about you, and I framed it, and I have one for you, but I also have, more importantly, have one to hang in the BBC building, and thank you for everything that you do. Now he's going to go back to the BBC and hang that. Thank you so much for your time. He also had a couple things that he wanted to say. Because of his generosity and spirit, he wants to recognize other people because that's what he does.
I wasn't expecting this. I'm not better than anybody else. I do what I do because my community, I'm just blessed that I have a job that everybody has reached out and accepted me. This is my hometown. I'm just trying to give back and make sense, and I'm glad that everybody's been there, supportive. And it's not just me, tons of groups. I get to work with the young students and the young kids in some of these groups, Twilight Program, Teens for Change and all that. So I get to give them something in return. So at the end of the day, it's the community, so I thank you.
Bill, you are so appreciated in this community. Thank you, thank you. Really lovely. Thank you. All right, so next up, we're going to hear about the Appalachian Trail Fest. We have Michael and Ken, yes?
Thank you. It's nice to be here again. I really appreciated the article about Bill Clark in the paper. What a courageous thing to do. So nice to be here when he was thanked. Oh, there we go. Thank you. So we were here, I don't know, a month ago maybe, and told you a little bit about what was coming with the Trail Fest, but we thought we'd back up a little bit, give you a little bit of the history of how we got to where we are, and then go through some of the details of what we're planning for the 30th of July. I have put brochures, are given to Jeannie, brochures for each Select Board member, and a few of the flyers, posters that will be posted around town. We'll say a little bit more of that as we go. I hope you all recognize the trailhead on Route 9, where the Long Trail and the AT begin here. The Long Trail begins, the AT continues. Of course, the Long Trail preceded the AT. So I moved to Bennington in 2019, and I felt that I wanted to give something to Bennington. I just, that was just my inclination. And I think within the first couple of months, there was a public meeting at the library about whether there was interest in applying to make Bennington a designated Appalachian Trail community. I went to that meeting, and here I am now, doing more. Isn't that the way it works? So anyway, we see the opportunity that the designation has brought to Bennington as serving many things. Awareness of the trail, education about hiking and safety, the health of outdoor recreation, economic development. Having Bennington designated as an Appalachian Trail community gets us Appalachian Trail publicity to anybody that goes to the Appalachian Trail Conservancy. And every AT business supporter who has chosen to do that for free, they can become a business supporter, they get to put an ad on the Appalachian Trail Conservancy website. So we've been going around and getting a number of business supporters, too. So there's economic development, and of course, there's the history. I mean, with Vermont being, you know, the vision for the Appalachian Trail really started in Vermont, and so we're very, very excited about that. So just a few more photos of the trail. I'm not sure where this view was from, but maybe some of you know. And of course, the shelters that you find along the way. So we applied. A number of people participated in writing the application, and we got the designation. And with the designation comes signs that you can put in the community. So this is one of the signs that a number of us who worked on the application were there to check out that possibility of a location for one of the signs. One of the requirements of being an AT community is that you do some annual event. And so our vision for the first year, we were designated in 2020, so the first, and we did that, the dedication was done online by Zoom. A lot of people participated. Senator was there. Anyway, various people participated in the designation, and then we decided we would do a Trail Fest for our first annual event. We did have a potluck dinner with the Green Mountain Club and people that have been involved in the Appalachian Trail effort, and that was held out at Willow Park last summer, so that brings us to this summer. July 30th, noon to 3:00 p.m., Bennington Trail Fest at the Recreation Center, free food, lots of activities. But this is the thing I want to say here, and then Ken's going to talk a bit about what will be happening that day. But Betsy Kane, who is an instructor at the, you help me out here, at Southwest Tech, has been very involved with the AT work since we started. She attends many of the meetings. One of her students designed the logo that was used for the designation. That student, Tyler Donegan, also helped with all the materials that have been designed. What you have in front of you were designed by Southwest Tech students. And one of the things that I like about it is, let me see here. So there's the poster, which you all have. There's the brochure. There are going to be little buttons. There's, they're going to be yard signs. We've got a big banner that's going to go on the Putnam Block, so we've got a lot of ways to get the word out. And the Bennington banner is also working with us. We're going to have a trivia contest, and the Bennington banner is going to print the trivia contest, and people will be encouraged to complete the trivia, bring it to the event, and with the potential, winning a prize. But the students did all this work, and they reached out to the advertisers. There were a number of advertisers who helped to fund all the things that we're doing, and they actually communicated with the advertisers to get their logos, to get the text that they wanted in the ads, and then they made those, they designed that for the brochure, and I think that's pretty neat. So we have a lot of gratitude to give to Betsy Kane and to those students, and I just want the community to know that. Ken, I'm going to let you.
Hello. Ken Millman, Bennington. So the event is going to be at the Rec Center. We have the White Square. Memorial Park is where all the tables will be set up, the music, the food, and then the big field where the banner is will be for lawn games. So we have live music, free food, tables. I'd like to list a couple of the, or I'll list the groups that are involved that will have tables. The Bennington Museum, Lake Perrin, the Green Mountain Club, the police will have their Copsicle truck, the Vermont, there'll be Vermont product tables. We also have a bear hanging demo, backpacking demo, the Forest Service, the Fish and Wildlife will also be there, as well as bats. It's going to be good food. There'll be music by GVH. And... There'll be music by GVH, and we really hope that people have a good time. We are publicizing it to hikers on the Facebook page, which they, hikers like to go to the Facebook page for the year that they're hiking, and we are on there. And we're hoping that the promise of free food, they can be able to stay overnight in the Rec Center, use the showers, which is really popular with hikers. And we are then going, at the event, we will be funneling visitors to the downtown restaurants and bars, and we really hope that it's a success.
Fantastic. So Ken, do you want, do you want people to, hands are already going up. Do you want, do you wanna finish and then, okay.
We are gonna thank, we are getting support, and we thank the town of Bennington. There are a group of businesses in town that have signed up and are giving discounts to hikers, and that's being publicized. Various community members, the Green Mountain Club, J.J. Williams, and the Bennington AT community. Also, Jonah Spivak has been essential to us getting here, and he's sick right now, but getting better. But I would be remiss if I did not shout out to Jonah. And now, any questions?
Bruce, you are just like.
Well, it's just a comment. When describing the bear hanging demo, what you are actually talking about is how to hang up your stash to avoid bear contact with your stash. You're not hanging bears. I just want the community to understand that. Because otherwise, it sounds a little gruesome.
Yeah, or me, yeah.
Or dangerous, actually, so.
Yes, we want to avoid, when you're on the trail, you need to hang your food.
Absolutely.
And get it to, so where bears are not, where you protect it from bears, and protect yourself, because if the food is with you.
Yep.
There may be an interaction you don't want.
Yes, Jean. If any of you have the energy, I just want to say, the library did a phenomenal job of preparing a bibliography of materials for Juneteenth, for people to take and, you know, have ideas for what to read. They probably would do the same thing for this event. Like, I've only read Bill Bryson's book, which is absolutely hysterical, but there's probably way more stuff in the library that they would. Librarians love to do this stuff, so if anyone has the energy, I don't mean to make you do more.
There's space for our tables.
They're gone, I know, I'm sorry. But it probably would just be like one phone call.
Yeah.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah.
One more thing, I thought I'd mention, right before we went to Pennsylvania, I just got back from someone's 50th wedding anniversary. A box arrived on my porch. Sylvia Cassano, who grew up in Bennington, has done trail professional work for many years, has now moved to Maine, but she's been very involved with this effort from the beginning, helped write the application and so forth. She asked Darn Tough Socks in Vermont if they would make a donation to the event, because it's something they do. They support local groups that are doing community service events. They sent 20 pairs of Darn Tough Socks. We will be giving out prizes for the trivia contest, for door prizes, various, anything we can think of. And we've got some giveaways from the Green Mountain Club as well, a guide and a map, and I think a hat, and several other things. So there'll be a lot of giveaways. There are gonna be a little button that everybody will get, and so it's gonna be fun. It's gonna be fun, and I hope, I hope we get a lot of people, and I think it'll be a good thing for Bennington, so.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Well, any, yep, anyone else?
All right, thank you for your time.
Well, anyone in the, in public? Any questions, comments? No? All right. So thank you so much. This is great.
Free food.
Oh. Oh, you have to.
It's not noon, it's great.
We'll keep announcing it on July 30th.
July 30th.
Yeah.
Excellent. All right. That was great. We're all looking forward to it. All right. Next up, implementing Town Vision. I think both Jeanne and Tom have, have things they would like to address.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to mention, Juneteenth happened on June 18th. Yeah. It was great. It was freezing cold. The weather did not cooperate, but at least it didn't rain. But boy, it was cold that day. So the, the whole event was just so well planned, and there were so many interesting things to do. The library, like I said, they did a phenomenal job with not only the bibliography, but all the activities that they had planned. The speakers were great, the food was great. It was really wonderful. So I'm assuming they'll do it again, and we can all go again, and maybe it'll be warmer next year.
It's gotta be.
Yeah, it's gotta be. And then the other thing was, I think I mentioned last meeting, that we have a walk and roll about town scheduled for this Wednesday. It is indeed happening. It's Wednesday morning, so you may see a small group of us touring town facilities during the morning on the 29th. And I'll be reporting back on that once we've made some progress. Tom's gonna go as well.
Yes, I am. And I just, I just wanted to mention the incredible day we had yesterday at the Pride Celebration here in Bennington. I had the pleasure of participating in the parade. Everything went seamlessly. It was incredibly well planned. I can't say enough about the folks at Queer Connect for putting all this together. Everyone had a great time. I didn't see any non-smiling faces anywhere in the town of Bennington. All the businesses downtown seemed busy, which is wonderful. Merchants Park was packed with people enjoying the splash pad and the music. It was great. Gracie actually was enjoying the splash pad, if anyone knows Gracie. So I just want to thank everyone at Queer Connect for putting this all together, and we look forward for many, many more to come. Thanks.
Wonderful.
Jeanne?
Yeah.
I have one other.
Oh, please, please.
Event that took place on Saturday. A wonderful event, a marking of a life in front of what has been the Catamount Tavern. And it marked the life of Peg, who was an enslaved woman here after there was supposed to be no slaves. And this was done, I was particularly moved by all of the speakers. Each in their own unique way spoke about the importance of this. Jim, I know you were recording the event. It will be on CAT TV?
Right.
Good, it will. So if you missed any of that, that would be, it was a wonderful experience. And you should note that there is a marker. I think it's not, is it there now?
Yes, in the middle of the sidewalk.
In the middle of the sidewalk, going up. It's just behind the Catamount sculpture there. And the odd thing was that it was, it's a project that was, unbeknownst to me, started by Paul Groald, who is an artist, but who also happens to be the husband of one of my wife's roommates in college. And we had not seen him in probably 40 years. So it was wonderful in that way, too, to see his work coming to fruition. And if you know of other persons whose lives need to be marked, please get in touch with Paul or the Bennington Museum. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the lovely thing about being able to talk about implementing the vision is that it is the full community, and I think, you know, that is so important. Tordis, did you see your hand go up?
Hi, I'm Tordis Fisselhart from Bennington. It's just a very quick P.S. that in the last few weeks, before the stopping stone was placed, research revealed what Peg Margaret Bowen's last name was. And so, which gives her the respect and as an example to other communities. Because just recently, a historic marker was placed at another community in the state with only the first name. So we can be proud of that and be an example for the state.
That's wonderful. And I, and I do think the fact that it was stamped by hand, her name was stamped by hand, as well as her dates, is, yeah. This is, this is wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for that addition.
Yes.
All right. All right. So now, we're gonna change, oh, sorry. Please.
I'm curious, when will it be available on CAT TV? I will be producing it, it will be added to the speaking properties at our event.
And so, Jim, will it be in the schedule? How will people know?
We will put it in the schedule, it will probably be available on our radio on demand and along on Facebook.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, slight change of gears, the Town Loan Program. Shannon is, Brusati is with us to talk about that.
Great. Thanks for having me tonight. So I'm gonna be giving just a brief overview of the town's revolving loan program. I was talking to Stu about what was the genesis of this program, and where did the funds come from? So it's important to note that they're not, it's not a taxpayer-funded program. It actually came through a grant that the town received from Housing and Urban Development. We think maybe in the mid-'70s. And basically, it was for a program, there was money that was left over, and it was reserved for economic development. And that eventually became what's now known as our revolving loan program. And what's so great about it is that because it's a loan program rather than, rather than a grant program, the monies are paid back, and that fund is replenished, and has been able to really serve the community in so many ways. When you look at all of the different, particularly businesses in our downtown that have received funds from the loan program, to help them either get started in their business or to expand their business. So let's see. I can't remember. It's been a while since I've, did I just go like that? Yeah, here we go. So small business loans are really the heart of the revolving loan fund, and the purpose of the fund is to encourage business development in Bennington. The eligibility for the program are local businesses that have limited access to traditional financing, so traditional bank loans, for example. And many of the programs that I've seen in my three or so years that I've been with the town, folks who are applying for the town loan are often coming for a gap in funding, so that maybe they've gotten a bank loan, or they've been able to finance, you know, personally a project, but they've got a gap. And so that's how, how those applications often work. The uses of the loan funds for business loans can be for interior, exterior, property improvements, purchase of machinery, equipment for machines and fixtures. But the loans are not, you cannot use the loans for refinancing or real estate acquisition or operating capital. So it's really kind of nuts and bolts funding for construction and equipment. The loan amounts average about $35,000, but certain projects have received larger loans based on the overall cost of the project, if it has a really large startup cost, of the benefit to the community, such as the Putnam Block, and the loan funds that we have available at the time. And the select board, over, the way that the applications come in, they come into the Office of Community Development, and then I review the applications, I meet with the applicants, and any, go over their, you know, what's required in the application, talk about their business plan, and then I bring the applications to the town manager, and we discuss. And then those applications and the recommendation from town staff comes to the select board for approval. So the interest rates are generally a fixed rate of 50% of the prime interest rate at the time of closing, plus two percentage points, not to exceed 7%. But what I have seen is that we've really been able to offer very low interest rates, particularly to incentivize downtown development. Because really, that's what we want development to be happening in our town center. So that's why we've been able to do that. And the application process includes, you can go to the town website. Right now, it will be better, as we revise our town website, but what you do when you go to Town Departments under Community Development, there's a little line that shows the loan program description and application. So you can link to that, or you can also call, call the office or email me for more information. One of the requirements is to develop a business plan, and we're very lucky to have Nancy Shuttleworth with the Vermont Small Business Development Center, who's our Bennington representative. And she is incredible. I've worked with her with a number of different applicants. It's a free service. She's incre, you know, she has lots of experience developing business plans, and she really looks at data for other similar businesses that people are doing across the state. So that informs the process as well, when she's working with folks who are, who are developing a business plan. And it's free. So her email is nshuttleworth@vtsbdc.org, if you are interested in not only applying to the town loan, but just developing a business plan. And the application also includes, in addition to the business plan, collateral, a tax return, a letter of rejection from the bank, which basically is saying, you know, from a local bank or regional bank, why they're not able to finance the full amount needed for the project. Also, you have to have your credit score and estimates for the work to be completed, which can include, if it's a list of equipment, or bids from local contractors, et cetera. And then confirmation that you don't owe anything to the town of Bennington is also one of the requirements. So it's a fairly simple application. It's a pretty quick turnaround time. I think people have been really pleased with the process overall, since I've been here. So the revolving loan fund also includes loans for housing, which I think are, at least in my experience, not as common. But one of the reasons I'm here tonight is to just let people know that this is also a part of the program. So the purpose of the housing loans are really to encourage landlords to reinvest in their housing units, to ensure safety and quality of life of tenants. Also, to encourage property owners to, you know, rehabilitate existing housing stock, and to make energy efficiency upgrades. So those are kind of the, the overall goals. And the eligibility of the program for the housing loans are that the property must be located in the town of Bennington. And the, the intention of these are really to serve low to moderate income folks. So whether they're property owners themselves, who have a household income of 80% or less of the median income for Bennington County, so that, that number is around $47,000. Or they have tenants who are also low to moderate income. And they also have to provide sufficient collateral to secure the loan, and have no outstanding balance on any town accounts. The use of the loan funds can be for interior and exterior renovations that comply with town and state housing codes, such as electrical, plumbing, ADA compliance, weatherization, energy efficiency. The list could go on. And the loan amounts are up to $25,000 for single-family homes or per rental unit. So the interest is the same as the, the interest rates are generally the same as the small business loans as well. So that is a very quick overview. I also went back and looked at the last five years, and within, since 2017, the town has given out over $1.1 million in, in loans. So it's really, I think it's a very successful program that we should be proud of, and there aren't that many others in the state. I've talked with other people who are in my role, and I think we're unique in that we have a revolving loan fund.
Shannon, I've got a question for you. What are some of the more recent new businesses? Can you name them?
Sure.
Especially in the downtown?
Yeah. Farm Road Brewery, right on the four corners. They received a town loan for some of their brewery equipment. And actually, that's a good example, because they also, a lot of times when we're working with applicants, we're also looking at what other resources are out there for them. So I mentioned Nancy and the business planning, but there are also loans available through Vermont Economic Development Association, VEDA, and the Vermont Community Loan Fund. And so I believe that Farm Road was able to, they were able to access another loan through one of those organizations, and a small grant through the Vermont Buildings, it's like Buildings and General Services, has a grant program called Building Communities that has small grants, about $25,000, for regional economic development. So Farm Road also received a grant. And those are, Jonathan Cooper at BRC helps to put those applications together. So that was a good example of kind of all of these different forces coming together to help get that business off the ground, and it's been. to help get that business off the ground, and it's been a great success since they opened. Some other businesses that are, that are new and doing really well are the Angry Egg Two, received a town loan. The Little City Cideri up on Shields Drive was another one. The Bennington Community Market, which was using their loan fund to purchase equipment and build a commercial kitchen at 239 Main Street. Those are a few examples. There are probably more as well.
Thank you.
Great. Shannon, I'm just wondering if you would just clarify, when you meet with the select board, we don't actually make a decision that's really-
Right.
Town staff make the final decisions.
Right. But the select board, you know, has to give the final review.
Yeah, we review it and it's, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to try to correct that. It really isn't an approval we seek from you.
Right.
But it's, we want to inform you what we're doing, and you have an opportunity to seek more information if you're uncomfortable with what we brought to you. So it is, it's a combined effort. On the commercial loans only. We don't come to you on the housing loans. We handle those on our own.
Great. Other questions?
Thank you.
Yes?
Let's see. You mentioned the amount of money in the last five years.
Mm-hmm.
And that's huge. Do you, I don't mean to put you on the spot, do you know how many businesses that include in?
You know, I wanted to get that data and I wasn't able to, partly because I should mention Beth Antonioni, who's the Community Development Assistant, who really administers all of the loan funds, and she's out today. So I thought, I'm not going to be able to get that number without Beth here.
Okay, sorry. That's okay.
But, but yeah, you know, if there's, yeah, I can get that to you, though.
It's okay.
It would be very helpful.
We could get it in the manner, yeah.
We can add it to the manager's report as an update.
Next, please. Yes.
And I just want to make the public aware that repayment of these loans is a complete non-issue. They are repaid.
Right.
And, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was out there.
Oh, another important one that I failed to mention was that the Putnam Block received a large loan from the revolving loan fund that really went to both, you know, housing and economic development, right?
And then the only other comment I wanted to make was, it is kind of an odd requirement that they, you require a rejection letter from the bank. That doesn't mean the project isn't worthy. It's just-
Right.
The bank has its limits and they need more, and it's just to fill the gap.
Right. And it sounds harsher than it is.
Yeah.
In fact, we work really often with Kelly Legacy, who's a commercial lender at the Bank of Bennington. She's wonderful and she's really familiar with this process. So it's basically saying, you know, if they're able to fund some piece, that's expressed, but if they're not able to fund, then they explain that.
Right.
And she's great at helping people with resources as well.
Right. Yeah. Okay, that's all. Thank you. Super. Gary?
You said that the average loan was $35,000. Is there an upper limit or is there?
Well, the Putnam loan was $350,000.
So the substantial funds.
That was a substantial, and I think it was just a special circumstance, you know, that it was, it was a transformative project downtown and we had the funds available. And then, you know, it's been great. That was right when I started, three years ago, and that has been replenished. You know, I mean, even though it's not being paid off by the Putnam Block yet, it's been, others have paid off their town loans, right? So-
Yeah, I think at the present time, we have in excess of half a million dollars in the loan fund.
It's about, I looked it up, it's about $385,000 right now.
You sure? Okay.
Unless there's something, something that I don't know. But that's the number.
The check that came in today.
That would also be helpful to have that information occasionally for the-
Right.
Other questions?
Yes, sir. So this is still a grant-funded program, correct?
Yeah, I mean, those grant funds back in the '70s basically provided the seed money, right? And it's just been replenished over time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This is really helpful, and I hope that people are aware, yes. Public comments, yes. Nancy, please come up.
Shannon, could you give a ballpark figure? How much total between the money currently in the account and money that's out? How much total is that account worth? And I think if somebody, a person or a group wants at least $100,000, I think they should be willing to come here and talk about it publicly. This may not be money from our budget, but certainly the people in the town office, they're the ones spending the time that we're paying to work with the people on the loan. If you're giving a group that much money, I think the public should be aware of the project or the program.
I'm not quite sure how to answer your first question. So you asked about-
Total, how much money that's out of the money in the account? What's the total ballpark figure?
Of, I don't know if you are able to answer this, Stu. I think I-
Five million?
Oh, no, no.
A total that's, that's actually being-
A million and a half to two million.
A one and a half.
Did you hear that? Million and a half?
That's a nice, healthy, that's a nice, healthy number, and it's nice that there is so much out in the community's hands at this point. That's, that's great. Okay. And then, you know, I, these are confidential applications that have a lot of information, which I think is probably why, when you share it with us, it's an executive session. We're not allowed to speak about it. Yeah, it's completely confidential information. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'd just like to add a lot of information is voided out for us as well.
Yeah, that's true. It is. Yes. Because we don't need to know it.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions on this? No? All right. Thank you so much, Shannon. That was, that was very, very helpful. Manager's report.
Yes, I'll be very brief tonight. Willow Park, the new playground is on schedule. I'm told that we're still shooting for sometime in July to begin the removal of the existing playground. And at that time, there'll be a presentation, I believe at the site, of the new playground, what it will look like. Everything has been ordered and it's in delivery or on the way. So we're, we're pretty excited about the fact that that playground will finally be in place and much safer, extremely colorful, but nonetheless, it will be done.
Willow will be happy.
Work it.
The colorful.
Absolutely.
Yes.
It's his choice.
Nonetheless. Morgan Springs, if you've been by the site, the fence is now up. Much of the landscaping is in place. The gravel is down, and trucks began taking water from the springs on Wednesday of last week. So we can fit two trucks on the site at a time. I know that the folks from Primo Waters, who helped us financially with the project, were up in town, I think, last Thursday to take a look at the site and understand. They're actually servicing three different water bottling plants from this spring, as well as some of the others they own and control. But it's there, it's operating. There'll be no more trucks on Bradford Street. The last thing I want to talk a little bit about is the CTC, former CTC building on Benmont Avenue, 254 Benmont. That has been an eyesore since the fire. One of those fires where you kind of wish that it hadn't saved the building, but nonetheless, we have been working, trying to figure out how to get that structure removed. Obviously, concerns about material in the building. We've done our due diligence in that regard. We're pretty certain now that we can enforce demolition. But the problem is, is we don't have a willing partner. The former principal in the corporation has been unresponsive, and we have an estimate of at least $120,000 to demolish and clean the site. So we will most likely have to take court action in order to get that building and that eyesore out of Bennington.
Stu, with respect to the building being torn down, are there any liens on it? Or will the person that owns it-
No, no.
The person that owns it down will need to take ownership of the lien?
No, the corporation is defunct. As I said, the principal in the corporation has been unresponsive. We will have to go to court to be able to get onto the property and take it down. There's no sense of placing a lien on the property. There's already several hundred thousand dollars in delinquent taxes. So this will be one of those situations where we'll be doing this for the good of the community, thanks to the former principal in the corporation.
Is there, is there a timeframe for this?
We don't have a time. We've got to file the paperwork. We, we have a situation where our current town council has conflicts, so we need to find other legal assistance in this particular case, and that's been a little bit difficult for us. So we're, we're working on it, and that's as much for the owners who live around the property as for anyone else.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Jean?
Is, excuse me, is the, the whole building going to be razed or just the part that burned? Because part of it is being lived in.
There are two buildings that are affixed to one another that made up the CTC building. The wood structure that was not burned is owned by Bruce LaMeister and is currently rented out. The other property was owned by CTC Corporation, which is now a defunct corporation. That is the portion that must be removed. So there's going to have to be a severing of the two buildings in some fashion.
Okay. My idea, thinking outside the box, then, is not going to work, which was to do like a controlled fire training event, which I know that-
Unfortunately, no, that would be a little risky.
That's not going to work. No. Okay.
And can the barrels, are there barrels in the building? And can, will those materials be moved before the demolition of the building?
I have not been in the building myself.
So we've worked with the EPA and the A&amp;R, Vermont Agency of Natural Resources and the UCL Protection Agency. They did not have any interest in the building. They did not think it was dangerous enough to take any action, so they said, it's up to you, town, figure it out. So we hired an environmental consultant to do some testing and take a look. The testing results came back promising in that there were no significant exceedances of chemicals that are of concern, no asbestos even, surprisingly. So we think the demolition costs will be significantly lower than we thought. Now, $120,000 is a lot of money, but if they needed to bring it all to a certified landfill where hazardous waste was brought, that probably would increase the price three to four times. So a little bit of luck there. So we, one of the things we do need to do, though, which is why we're looking for councils and as our council has been conflicted out, is to make sure that we have an agreement, an enforceable agreement with the state, that if, if there is eventually environmental issues there, that the town's not going to get tagged for those simply because we took care of a building that was falling down. So we will work for that non-liability agreement, but that, that's one of the complications of this process, because that's not, as you can imagine, the state does not move quickly. And, you know, I can't blame them yet because we haven't even applied yet, but we do know that's not a quick process, so we'll have to deal with that first, now that we know that we can feel reasonably comfortable that we've done our due diligence, that there should be, should be, the state should agree that should we bring it down, there shouldn't be any liability on our part. But we have to work all that out. We also have to decide whether we, how we take, how we take control of the property. Do we do a tax sale? Do we get a court order to, to tear down or both, or, you know, what process we want to use to get control of that property? So lots of decisions to be made, but our ultimate goal is to get it down so that that neighborhood doesn't have that blight.
And so, Dan, is there any concern about those barrels sitting there for a long time or the materials sitting there for a long time? I'm just thinking of-
Whatever materials are in there, they've been tested and there has been no concern.
And they're not going to rust out or just mischief?
Not, so we rely on our environmental consultants to tell us if there's any environmental dangers, and they did not identify any.
Okay. Okay.
This is just one of those situations where it looks like nothing is happening, and why isn't anything happening? And it's unfortunate, but these things take such a long time.
There is not an owner that we can go after-
Exactly.
Or start trying to figure this out.
People often assume that nothing's happening and it's just sitting there, and that's not true.
Great.
And just one last comment. Last Tuesday, I received an email request from, FOIA request from an individual who was anonymous, but it's appropriate, wondering or seeking copies of all subpoenas, FOIA requests, any contact from California attorneys related to investigations of criminal activity by the town of Bennington, the Bennington Police Department, a number of individuals, including members of the select board. And I had the pleasure of telling that individual that there were none. It was based on a Facebook post by one of the individuals in the community. And there's another individual that is alleging criminal investigation by some sort of statewide major crimes task force. That is not in existence either. I think people who read these Facebook posts should not believe them because they are fantasy at the present time. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for many, yes. All right. Upcoming agendas.
Excuse me?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I have a question for Stu, actually about the BOD sampling. And let me, let me ask it this way. When we go out to the, let me see if I get this right, dairy manufacturers, distilleries and breweries, I'm assuming that's to, to look at a sample or do some sampling?
We will be taking grab sample of their discharge.
Right, right, of the discharge. Let's, let's say Brewery A, their discharge seems to be high in BODs, and we would like them to reduce them in some way. And it might mean pretreatment, right?
That's correct.
Would such a brewery, if it was going to require a bunch of additional equipment to do this, would they be eligible for the revolving loan fund? That's my long way of getting around to it.
And yes, they would be, Bruce.
Yeah.
And that is, that is an offer we will make should we find businesses that are having problems and may not have the financial wherewithal to deal with the issue. I think when we did the water and sewer funds here, Larry Gates talked a little bit about some of the more simple ways to reduce BOD, simply capturing and holding and aerating your waste.
Right.
That may be very inexpensive, but there may be some that have incredibly high BOD levels. And BOD, for those out there, it's biochemical oxygen demand. It is a permit limit on our wastewater treatment facility. Our effluent must not exceed 30 milligrams per liter. And as of, historically, we have never exceeded that, to the best of my knowledge, but our BOD levels have been creeping up. So the staff has brought the concern to me. We did talk about it during our budget meetings. I included this in my manager's report for the board's information. It gets a little technical, so I didn't really want to jump into it.
I understand that, but I do think it's important, and I'm happy that, that we would include that with the, along, particularly if we find-
It's, it's a jobs retention issue.
Absolutely.
You've got a business that's, that's doing well and is employing people, we're going to try to help them.
And I do want to say that Stu raised that as something that he was planning to include in the conversation with them, so.
Right, right. Absolutely. I just wanted to make it.
And the first batch of letters has gone out.
Okay.
It went out last week.
And I would assume, now that we know this, it's something that we need to make new businesses aware of?
Yes. More than likely, we'll be coming back to you at some point in the not-too-distant future with an amended sewer use ordinance, just to more specifically deal with those kinds of things.
Right.
The current ordinance deals with it, but it's, it's not in a very specific way.
Right.
Great. Anything else for Stu? Sorry, Bruce.
No, that's all right.
All right. Okay. So upcoming agendas. We're ready to move on. All right. So part of the reason this meeting is really short is because I messed up and did not put the Bennington Police Department on this agenda. So my apologies to both the chief and lieutenant, who had taken the time to be ready for tonight. So they will come to our next meeting, and they particularly wanted to address the uptick in violence that we're all hearing and in some cases seeing. So that is, that, yes, they were supposed to be here- So that is, that, yes, they were supposed to be here tonight, but they will be here at our First July meeting. I don't have anything else for sure.
Trying to think what our notes had.
Well, and it may be the opioid task force may come the 11th, but they may also come the following meeting.
Oh, and thank you for reminding me. We just got a notice from the opioid, whatever it's called. This is the funding mechanism for all of the settlements that have been made. Vermont will be receiving just over $2 million from the first two settlements in the opioid cases. Bennington's portion, and now the Vermont portion goes to every town in the state. And so this does not deal necessarily with what Bennington should receive as part of being a, a party to the entire settlement.
Right.
This is just for the state of Vermont. Just over $8,000 will come to Bennington at some point, and as we've talked about, it will go into a reserve so that we can, we'll be setting these monies aside to deal with the improvements in the community that deal with opioid and, and other addictions.
Good. Good.
Great.
Anyone else have anything that they know of that, since my memory is clearly faulty?
You're forgiven.
If the opioid task force could come on that same week, you know, the first-
Would that be our pleasure, to have them both here on July 11th?
Yeah, they do sort of piggyback each other.
Yeah, they're highly connected.
Okay.
All right. I will check that out.
I would encourage it.
Might make for a long meeting, so you might need to-
I don't, well, they may be the whole agenda.
Right.
Yeah.
Other than the manager's report.
That would be great.
Let's try it?
Yeah.
If, if that's the other one, let's just make it the whole agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, we'll try and do, oh, oh, I can't promise that.
This is a good timeframe, so let's try to keep it.
Okay. All right. Other business. Gary, anything?
Well, I think this is a record meeting for me, in terms of time. Just happy Fourth of July to everybody.
Thank you. Tom?
I've just noticed, walking around town, that the flowers and the landscaping downtown are absolutely spectacular. I'm not sure who's doing that work, but it's whoever they are should be-
The company name is Sweet William Garden Design, Caitlin Pettit. She, her business is just over the line, Who's at Falls. She's been our contractor for many, many years now, and I think she does a great job.
Yeah, it looks beautiful.
I got a call today from a constituent who expressed concern for a friend of hers who is disabled, and she, and this individual likes to go to the rec center, but she complained or criticized the placement of some of the handicap parking in proximity to the door. In addition to that, she pointed out a lack of railings, because the way that this woman described her friend says, she can walk, but it's very difficult for her to walk. And if there was an adjacent railing, it, it would be an improvement to her.
Along the walkway itself?
Yes.
I see.
Jim, that's so timely, because the walk and roll is this Wednesday. So that's, if, if it's possible for that individual to contact VCIL, to contact Charlie.
Vermont C.
Call Charlie Murphy at Vermont Center for Independent Living.
I can do that.
And share that with Charlie, so that on Wednesday, he'll be looking at how that might happen. That would be great.
And Stu, I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm good anyway. Would you like to go and meet this individual? And I, I would, I would be there to introduce you to, to her and her friend, so that you can witness for yourself what she thinks are important needs to be addressed.
It'd be great if she could come to the town offices.
Okay.
Because we can get her in.
Okay.
We can sit down in one of the conference rooms.
I'll do that. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Jim. Another quick question, Stu, sorry. Are there fireworks?
No, not this year, I'm afraid.
No fireworks.
No, I'm just kidding.
Yes, yes, there are fireworks.
Phew, I was like, what? Heck, yes. Okay.
I'm going to be doing cotton candy at the fireworks.
Yes, there are fireworks.
No, there are fireworks. Actually, the ads will be appearing, appearing in the banner very soon. The fireworks will be July 4th, beginning at dusk, which is around 9:30 as it turns out. This year, the show will be slightly larger than in years past.
Wow.
Because our partners, certainly Price Chopper, Casella Waste, have all come up with additional funds to help increase the show from $13,000 to $14,000 this year. So it should be a pretty great show for us.
Okay. Boy, that was a relief. I was really sad there for a moment.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Just a reminder to the general public, don't bring your dogs. You know, for most dogs, it terrifies them. For years, my parents' dogs would be under the bed. So, you know.
In the basement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And one other thing, maybe two. I just want to reiterate what Jenny said. The Thursday night events on the splash pad are, the, the quality of the musicians is so high, and these concerts are free, they're really not to be missed. So I really encourage people to come. They're 5:30 to 7 o'clock every Thursday night throughout the summer, and rain does not stop the music, it's just moved inside. So I just really hope people will take advantage of those. And I started watching the series Dope Sick, and it's about the opioid crisis and how it took hold. I don't know if there's truth to it, or if it's sensationalized or not, but it's really amazing. So if you want to get educated on the opioid crisis, you might want to watch the series called Dope Sick.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Bad.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Sarah?
Yeah, so speaking of the Fourth of July and fireworks, I'll just ask people to really not do fireworks within town limits, because that is, it's quite noisy, and people are sensitive to that, myself included. And Fourth of July, the community Fourth of July celebration, Rotary's helping their annual bell ringing and declaration reading, the declaration readings at the monument. More information is to come. The banner will have that. And the bell ringing is at the town offices. And check the banner for more information.
Thank you. Bruce?
I have nothing left.
All right. I think it has, you guys really covered the town. That's great. All right. Well, if there's no other business, then I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I hope not.
No? Okay. Thank you.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.